This evening, so.
So we're already one over your.
Go with it.
Let's do the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the people of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's you. Six twenty seven.
Oh, and I guess. For those that are coming online.
He's got to work up to it. You'll be good, it's been awhile.
Yes, thank you. Eric, you had some boxes over here.
Well, I guess we're close enough.
Okay.
So I'll call this meeting of the Grandity Town Council for June twenty four, twenty five. Into order and note that Mark Ketch, the chairman of the council is accused this evening. Present are Larry Wade, Consular Charlie Clemens, Consular Jim Hatch, myself, I'm Dwayne Ludden. And we have with us Melissa Doan as our town manager and Eric Gifford as our fire chief this evening. For those of you online, we'll have a session here soon enough in our agenda. For citizens' requests, if you don't get in there, we'll check again before the end of the meeting. And see if there are any comments online for those of you out there. With that, we've already done the pledge of allegiance, I've opened the council meeting and we'll talk about a review in a minute. A motion is in order to accept the June tenth, twenty five council meeting.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any changes? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote, Larry.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
And Dwayne is aye. That brings us to citizens' requests. Eric, anything on your mind?
Nothing.
No? I don't know that anybody else is out there this time, is there Melissa?
I'll take a quick peek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, and we'll move on to the manager's report.
Okay, um, so on the warrant articles passed for the election that took place on June tenth. Also, Consular Clemens was reelected and RSU board Rebecca Kennedy was reelected. Congratulations. So I'd like to start moving forward with the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget items that. We have, that was a part of the budget that the voters approved, the first item is. I would like to have town council approve that I move forward with the shim and chip seal for Boynton Street, Cram Street and Highland Avenue. And also proceed with new copier lease. I provided you a memo that outlines. The budget amount, which is for the copier, it is estimated to be twenty five hundred dollars per year for a five year lease. The copier that we have now, the parts are no longer available. And our lease ended like three or four years ago. So my intent was to enter into a new contract, a lease agreement. And the fire department could actually get this lease, this copier that we have now. Because they have the copier that we had before, so. And then we'll dispose of that copier and then.
I would make that motion to allow you to do that.
Yes, seconded. Motion and seconded with respect to a copier lease agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, Larry.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
And.
Aye.
Dwayne is aye.
And also, part of that is I'm asking for council approval with them, assuming is in that motion because you read the memo, is to waive the competitive bidding process. Because the only vendor that I can find for that is Transco and that's a vendor that we currently have now. Again, asking for a request to waiver of the competitive bidding process. To do the chip seal on Boynton Street, Cram Street and Ha- Highland Avenue. The estimated cost is about two hundred thousand dollars. They, uh, Allstates is the only vendor in the state of Maine that does that process and they're going to be coming. To our area to do chip sealing and several other municipalities. The process, some of you may remember, they take stone with tar and overlay it over the pavement. And it improves the lifespan of the road. A good example of that is, uh, we did it on ten Road High Point Place in Deer Run. That chip seal was done in twenty twenty and those roads are still in really good conditions, so. It's a way to expand the life of Point Street, Cram Street, Highland Avenue, which was paved in. Highland Avenue was paved in twenty twenty one and Boynton and Cram were done in two thousand eighteen.
Another example of that's the Lambert Road and if you look at the section, first section that they did. There's hardly any failure, you get up with a broom and where they didn't do it. It's all coming apart.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So it's, uh, I would make the motion to allow you to vote Transco.
Uh, Allstates.
Oh. Sorry.
Yep, yep.
Can we hear a second?
Seconded.
Alright, so a motion is made and seconded with regard to chip seal on Boynton Street, Cram Street and Highland Avenue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Larry.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Dwayne is aye.
Just what we want to hear about on this degree, hundred degree day is that I secured our salt bid for the winter paving today. For seventy six dollars per ton. Last year was seventy seven dollars per ton, so a little bit of savings. But, uh, yeah, so that's all taken care of when the snowplow is starting again. I did speak to our municipal attorney yesterday regarding an update for one fourteen Cram Street and unfortunately I don't have anything to report. They are working with a clerk's office to get a, uh, date for the judicial sediment conference date. Uh, in which we will address the contempt of the judgment. So unfortunately, I don't have anything new there.
Have you had any late reports here recently, Melissa, with regard to that problem?
Complaints?
Yeah, I saw one today.
I get one every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a complaint every day regarding, uh, that property and that individual.
I understand the sheriff's office was up there yesterday.
Uh, that's what I understand as well, yeah. But I don't believe that they did anything, so. That's another, that's the issue, the ongoing issue, right? Regarding Viola Rand School, um, at the last meeting I talked to you about, I wanted to get an independent soil test done. And I worked with Lee Berman, who was recommended from Carpenter Associates. Uh, and she is from Watershed Resource Consultants. Um, and so she started out by doing, looking at the USDA soil survey. And they, that classified the land, um, vacant land at Viola Rand School as push off. Swanville Complex, which is characterized as a clay texture and ranges from somewhat poor to poorly drainable. With depths only sixteen inches, so you might recall, we needed at least five feet of drainage and that's obviously not going to occur. So she said she would move forward with a soil testing, but I didn't really see. Any sense of wasting any money for that because it doesn't appear that that's going to be the case. That's the second opinion that I heard, that that land is too wet for that. The RSU board is looking to have a decision this evening from the town council. As to whether we want to take ownership of Viola Rand School. At the last meeting, we talked about this and it was my recommendation that the town council take ownership. Prepare an RFP for the purchase of the building. The front area, the parking lot and the playground area. And I started really quickly last week, working on a draft RFP. For that such thing, recommendations to the town council report, I gave that to you tonight, you just to kind of look at. Obviously, I can, I'm going to do some more work on it and. Prepare a final presentation, but I just wanted to have town council's thoughts on the Viola Rand School.
Well, Melissa, let me just ask a question about the map that's attached, it's standard. Map, I think, for lot number sixteen. In front of that seems to be carved out with an odd shaped lot, I guess that's seventeen, that's a homeownership, right?
That's correct.
And the school, yes, is, uh. Somehow attached to that right away that enters there?
That is the right of way that goes into the school.
Okay.
That you can see. There's a designated right of way on the property, the presumption has always been it's to a back property. But that right of way, it only deeded on the school property, not anybody else's property, so it's just always been there. But, yeah, I mean, I, we haven't had an official survey done, that would be part of. Uh, when the RFP is done and we do, if we receive a favorable proposal. My recommendation has been to still divide it and keep that back acreage, acreage for maybe a possible future growth and development, I don't know what, but maybe. My presumption is that this is like the school area.
Right.
You know, um, and that the rest of that, uh, is a large portion of.
It says on that northern line, it goes back over nineteen hundred feet, I think.
Yes.
At least the right of way does.
Yes.
So my question is this, before we go out with the RFP, do we need to somehow demarcate what we would expect for frontage property?
Yeah, I know, I, I thought about it, I, I kind of would like to keep it open because what if we get a proposal that's really good and they want more of that acreage? That we don't necessarily have a need for right now. You know, I, I didn't want to pinhole us into one specific lot. We don't really have a plan for that acreage, it would just be kind of good to be able to keep it for future development, which should something arise.
So at this point, we would count on the bidders to suggest what they would like carved up, if anything?
I, I think so, yeah.
Melissa, um, would we be selling this as is then?
Yes, oh yes, yes. Yeah, I need to, I, I did make contact with our municipal attorney. Looking for some guidance on surveyors and how much it would cost to do a deed. And depending on your recommendation or what your decision is tonight, I'll have further conversations, but I need to see if. How the, how it's transferred, if it's done by deed. Or quitclaim deed, I need to find out more information, but I, I didn't want to spend any more money talking to our attorney, telling you what you guys wanted to do.
If we were. Guess. My question is, if we weren't able to sell it. What would that do in terms of? Just looking at the other side or?
Right. The town council would then have to decide on what we would want to do. I do feel like you'll get a couple. Propposers, I've had some interest in it from three different developers. So I don't think you're gonna. You know, make a ton of money on it, I don't think that's the end game. My concern is that if we don't control the sale. Or the proposal.
Yeah, it's all that.
Right, we can't figure out. We can't control what's best interest for the town of Bradley.
Right.
If the RSU was to sell it, you know, they're just going to be looking forward to getting rid of the building. If we have it in our control, we can look at what the proposers are proposing.
Right.
And see what is best for the town of Bradley.
That makes sense.
Well, I had that concern about, if your useless may see, so I've. Taken the liberty to talk to one of those folks who are interested. But I'm told, uh, that. This whole plot of land, the great big piece. Uh, probably not going to be a lot of interest in that, so I was just wondering if we should carve it out before we go to the RFP process.
Well, I think you read the RFP at all, because I did put in there that we would have intent to keep the back acreage.
Okay. Alright, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well that makes a difference, and they can figure it out for themselves, what, what they would like to have.
You know, it's really, I just don't want to. I did, first of all, I don't know what you guys are going to decide, second of all, I wanted to give you the option to have many proposals. That you can maybe determine a better use for that.
So when would you see this RFP going out?
Well, if you decide, I will contact the superintendent tomorrow and. I can start working on it right away, you know, I, I've done a lot of work on it, but I would obviously work a little bit more on it and. We could get it out by the end of July, ready to be returned back in by end of August with a decision for sometime in September.
Part of the process, would you have to go through our community to be able to get that? Seen, or we don't have to?
This RFP, I don't think so. You know, I need to figure out how the transfer will take place, whether it's by deed or quitclaim and. I would have a general conversation of things that should be included in there, but this, uh, RP I took from. When we owned the old fire station, actually. We did an RFP process for that and so that, this, a lot of this furbage came from that same RFP.
So the question you get tonight for the council is, first of all, do we want to accept the property from the RSU? Will you hear any motions in that regard?
I would make a motion that we accept it from the RSU.
Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the property from the RSU. Uh, after conveying that word to, uh. The principal or the superintendent, I guess. Uh, any further discussion on it?
What is the RSU expecting in terms of return? Are they just going to get this?
Yes, yeah, that's part of the law, is that it needs to come back to the town in which, um, because originally the town had that. Um, part of that consolidation process that we did in two thousand nine, that the voters approved. Was gift, they no longer use it for educational purposes, it must be offered to the town. So, yeah. I, you know, I need to have a conversation about, I think that he, they intend. On vacating it, you know, getting as much stuff as they can out of it, that I think it will work well with this process. As we get RFPs in August, they can kind of see, do we need to do more there, you know, we can work with them. Better to, to determine what they, they have desired to like. I think new doors were put in, um, and they, they want those doors, so if this process, it turns out to be a demolition. They might want some of the items that, that is demoed.
Interesting, okay.
Are they prepared to add anything to the demolition?
These are ongoing conversations.
We'll give them the doors. Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, I don't know who the people are who are interested. Interested parties, is it conceivable that what they, what you think that they might be wanting to do there? Might, uh. Involve their request in consideration of the whole property?
I don't know, I really don't know, they, the conversations I've had, um. Were, what are we going to be doing on with it, and I've said pretty much what I'm recommending. Um, and they said, well, we would like to be considered for proposals, please send us a proposal, we have some ideas on what to do with the property. Nobody really wants to put their cards out on the table on what they're going to be doing. Their concern is the septic system, right? That, right now it has an overboard discharge system. And I don't believe that that would be transferred to a new owner. And so I put in the RFP that they.
Yeah.
Yeah, means to work with main DEP to figure out what they're going to do about that. So they may say, we want it all and we can determine, well. Is that feasible for future development, you know, it's not feasible for cemetery, but is it feasible for something else for the town, I don't know. The first thing I thought about was solar, you know, like a solar development and, uh, Randy Bracken Carpenter said that. That land is feasible for full solar development, you know. So is that something the town wants to consider in the future, you know, I don't know.
Good. Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept the property from the RSU and a second to that motion. And we'll go to a vote, Larry.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Dwayne is aye.
So, and speaking to, uh, Lee from Watershed Resource Consultants, I said. Would you mind doing that research on the USDA soil survey, obviously she's going to charge us for this work, but, um. Regarding forty three Highland Avenue, because that is the property that we took over through tax foreclosure, uh, two years ago. And I've been trying to figure out if that's suitable for cemetery development, I had worked with, um. I think Kaylee Ward and had secured them coming to do an engineering study on it. But then we got word of this Viola Rand thing and I said, let's wait on that because this might be better. And so she did do the soil testing and she found that the land at forty three is the same as what is at Viola Rand. And not viable for cemetery development. So, my recommendation for forty three Highland Avenue is that we now contact a real estate agent and list it for sale. As the law states, we need to do for real estate, um, foreclosures.
I would second that, I mean, I would.
You'll make that motion?
Motion and second to deal with. Is it forty?
Forty three Highland Avenue.
Forty three Highland Avenue. And. Look to dispose of that property through real estate as required by the law. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd say is I'm, we do have a realtor in town and I do intend to contact him. And then I would try to go out from there to keep our realtor close to our area, but yes.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, uh, Larry.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Dwayne is aye.
Um, and then lastly, I had this really fun conversation about trash. Some of you have, may have known that, uh, our contractor was interviewed twice, once by Channel Seven and once by New Center. Two in town about human waste being in our, in trash and it's not just specifically Bradley, apparently it's happening in other municipalities as well. We do have an incident in Bradley that, um, residents from Crossroad. Bring their trash to a specific area on Crossroad. That is owned by a private individual and for many, many years has been no issues and this gentleman has been so kind to let them. Put their trash cans in their trash there. There's. Somebody is bringing tra- trash to that site that has human feces in it and I'm not talking diapers, I'm talking. A trash can full of human. Waste. And we believe that it's somebody who is living on Ridge Crest Road, which is. Um, a very rural part of Bradley and there are four people that live out there, um. As I, it's very, very rural, the houses are off of the grid, it's hard to see the houses from the road, there's cameras set up. It's not a place I feel really comfortable just driving around by myself, a couple, about a month or so, Dean and I went out together. To try to determine who it was. We wrote letters to all of the residents and we've heard from three of them, we haven't heard from one, so. I'm assuming that is the person doing this. So I'm going to request police presence and go visit this individual. Because I've written letters and that's not working. I don't know if that's the person and I'm not going to name that person because it's not appropriate, but, um. Last week, our contractor left the bags where the pavement meets the, uh. Dirt at the end of Boynton Street. And he said, I think that those bags have waste because that's what the bags looked like in the past. So I went up that night and I put a post-it note with a rock, because that's all I had with my truck. Please contact manager Dome eight two seven, dah dah dah. Went up the next morning and they were still there and nobody could call me, so I put a sticker on both bags that said the same thing. Last week, that trash that was at the end of. Boynton Street onto Ridge Crest was found in a can. On Crossroad, where the Crossroad trash is. I don't believe that a resident from Crossroad put that in there. The post-it note that I left was found on the trash can, so I think when they lifted it. The post-it note probably stuck to the trash can, so. That's just a situation that we're dealing with here and, um. I've written them letters, I may have even given you copies of the letters. There, there's very, there's alternatives for them to live off the grid, uh, the state allows for people to have primitive. Oath houses, it's, it's an allowable use, it just needs to be designed correctly. The city of Old Town, uh, wastewater takes camper RV waste all the time for free. I do it every time I go camping, well, I don't, my husband does. But, but, so there are alternatives, so. Uh, I hope to be able to work with them to figure out how to resolve this, uh, Neil has been very, very understanding. You know, as I said, it's not just happening here in Bradley, it's happening in other communities as well, so. Just an FYI as to why, uh. Why we were on the news. Twice for that.
I guess I have only one question, Melissa, is Ridge Crest, uh, an accepted town street?
No.
We don't maintain it.
We do not, no, we do not, but it's, it's, they can live up there, you know, they have road frontage and we have access for fire and EMS, um. So there are people that live out there, but they live out there for a reason, they want to be left alone and they want to be primitive, which is absolutely acceptable. Their waste isn't. So. That's all I have for my manager's report.
Melissa, I have a question, uh. When the RSU turns over the property to us, will our insurance automatically cover the property and the playground? Do we have to do anything special?
We, they will cover us for liability only, not for property damage. So if something happens to the playground, we, um, and we, we couldn't recover the cost of the playground equipment. If something happened to the building, it got on fire, we could not recover the cost of the building. We could, but it would cost up to twelve, I think it was twelve thousand dollars a year. And I think this ownership, I pray that this ownership is short term. And so they would cover us for liability, if somebody was to get hurt there and file a claim, that would be under our liability insurance, but not property damage.
Is the RSU planning on taking any of the playground equipment?
They are not planning on taking the playground equipment.
So, is there a consideration for signs saying?
Uh, yes, no trespassing.
At your own risk or whatever.
Yeah, no trespassing, private property, you know, that type of thing, yeah. Yeah. That's what we'll have to do is, you know, I don't know how many use it without school in session, I don't, I don't know that, so, but. Yeah, we definitely have to put it.
Would it be of, uh, in our interest to put it out to the people who live in the town if they'd like someone out of equipment for their house?
Uh, the RSU is doing that. Me, yeah, they are putting out to like the YMCA, uh. I, I don't want to say churches, but daycare centers or places of that to see if they want any of, any of that, so yeah. But we could, that's a really good idea if, you know, September one comes and we have it. We could maybe do that free for the taking, come and get, you know, type of thing, so.
Alright, anything else under the manager's report? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to new business, Melissa, getting new business from you?
Well, if you'd like to keep me employed for another year. But that's all I have.
Okay. Any other items on the council's part? Any other items on the council's part? Hearing none, we'll go right to that then, you know, six B, motion to accept the town manager's contract.
I would make that motion.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to accept the contract as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote, Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Dwayne is aye. Melissa, I wanna make sure we send a personal thank you to you for all the year diligence and efforts throughout the year, you do a good job for us and we wanna keep you.
Yeah, we try our best, right, to enjoy an effort.
You want us to send around the one we need to sign?
We need one signed, I don't know who, if anybody has signed, but I just want to hear if you wanna put at the end of the last page.
Get your caption now, Melissa.
Okay, perfect. One more year.
One more year. So with that, yeah, hearing no further new business, we'll move on to unfinished business, Melissa, anything you have?
Uh, nothing from me.
Unfinished business on the priorly council.
Melissa, um, a while back, we were supposed to have Sheriff's warrant here.
Yeah.
Um, is there any talks about him coming back and also would it be possible to talk to him specifically about one fourteen Cram Street? Or is, or maybe not because of its under litigation right now?
Um, we, he and I talked about it and the conversation was that he would come back in like November or uh, December. Because his intent for coming was offer getting additional shared, shared coverage in Bradley. And so obviously that's a budgetary issue when we start working on the budget in February.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you would come in and talk about specifically one fourteen Cram Street.
I just wanted to be able to get the townspeople on better understanding where they're coming from and why they're unable to do what, um, the town would like them to do.
Yeah, I can reach out to him and ask.
But I don't also know because
Yeah.
it's a legal situation now, too.
Yeah, yeah, and they deal with him all the time.
Right.
So, yeah, but yeah, I, I, I can definitely reach out and ask him if he would come in or send somebody to come in or talk to us.
Thank you.
Ryan's looking forward to retirement.
Is he?
Yes.
Because of one fourteen.
I didn't say that.
Yeah.
Anything else on our unfinished business? Hearing none, a motion is in order on the municipal warrants to accept the warrants presented tonight.
So moved.
And seconded.
And a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing nothing, Charlie? You want to vote, yes, Larry?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
I'm in. Next meeting is set for July fifteen. And our manager is looking at the web now to see if there's any questions we can help folks with.
Just an FYI for your excitement, next week, next meeting, we will be setting the tax rate. And in my thoughts, it's not as bad as what we thought, so I'm working on it still, but, um.
I guess I, I would add that there are some towns who are still struggling with that very thing.
That is very true, so, uh, there is no comments online.
Hey, thank you. That being the case, most of your adjournments in order. Second, I think we're all there on that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Done?
Yeah, thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Hopefully, I won't.